Sure.
........................... Make a motion for the President to adjourn.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Clinton will be a few minutes late.
Come in, Eric.
Morning. Morning, Eric.
How are you?
All right.
Little money out there.
Just a little bit. But, looks like we're gonna get some sunshine and warmth.
Yeah, looks good.
Yeah, we're due. Snowstorm last week, everything went well for us. First of all, no permits this week, by the way, so just let you know that.
Yeah.
Made it through the snowstorm.
The roads I proved looked good, so.
Yeah.
They did a good job, so.
For the most part, everything went pretty well with that. Material-wise, we're still holding up pretty good. Probably gonna have to buy a little bit of ice control or gravel or chips or what have you. But as far as salt, we're still doing pretty good with that, so.
Have you moved a crusher to Thomas yet, or getting close?
They tell me we're very close.
Okay, I just wonder.
Harry is back with us, working part-time, and he's telling me we're very close, so.
You are making some chips, then?
Not... We're in the straight...
When we go out there, we'll make chips, but we're finishing up and doing nothing but
road rock out at Blake right now.
I heard Harry is back.
Yep, so.
Part-time, full-time?
Yes, part-time.
Good, he's a good hand.
Absolutely. Yeah, very knowledgeable. So, landfill, let you know, we sold our scrap metal out there. $6,872.95, so just letting you know that.
Okay, good.
And we are in the final stages of the getting our permit for the beans. I've gotta send one thing back to KDHE, and then it'll be a 30-day approval, or it's gotta go through a process for 30 days, and then we should have our permit, so.
It's been quite a process.
But just think, what it would've been, it would've been a serious project.
It's been...
It'd be a five-year deal.
It's been very interesting, and we'll leave it at that, so. Bridgewise, 130th and Birch, we're letting the concrete cure before we can drill in and put our guardrail up. It's still a little green, so we don't wanna go too early on that. And we've moved over, Lynn, you'll be glad to hear this, 115th and Range.
I was gonna ask you a question.
We started there yesterday.
Can we have a flow?
We found a large void underneath there, five foot by eight foot by three and a half foot deep. We filled the void with flubel fill, and now we're coming back today, saw cutting, and we're looking at concrete in the deck back where we had to bust that out with a jackhammer.
There were quite a few people happy on that one.
Right, so we're looking at getting that open back up.
So here, we're giving any thoughts to the one down there on 95th and Unity?
95th and Unity, is that straight north of your house down?
Aye, yeah.
Aye, yeah, aye, yeah. That's a tough one, it really is.
That west there on Unity, or is it on 95th?
Go straight north of...
Straight north, just before you get the highway.
It goes through the pasture down there, and then breaks down... Is that the one we're talking about?
All fields.
All fields, yeah, fields, I should say.
With river crossing?
Yeah. Yeah, so...
You got two of them.
Yeah.
One of them is so steep, you almost can't get it up.
Right.
The other one, they still... I get questions about it quite often, 'cause if you know what you got, some of the places, you're gonna have an eight-mile go around to get to it.
Go around to get to it?
Take a lot of money fixing bridges.
Yeah, that one's... And it's gonna have to be super dry on that one, because I believe the tubes are completely... That are in there completely gone. Does that sound right?
It is.
Yeah, so.
I remember one of them caved in for sure.
You're just looking at them, you could put a tube on the south side of it, because the one that's worse running now.
That's where it's went through, okay.
That way, you could extend the concrete a little bit, and then fill the other tube up.
Okay. And then we gotta think about the approaches, getting down to it and back up. It's gonna be a very expensive...
Well, if you...
Process.
If you look at it, the one down on 85th Street, the one now, every time it floods, you're down there trying to go up a big hill to put the gravel and rock back on that one.
Yeah, but those approaches on 95th, that's a nightmare. That's on the south side.
Yeah. Yeah.
North side, 'cause it does...
I know, but the north... The south side looks...
Yeah, straight up.
Not near as steep as that one down there on 85th.
It might not be, but on the south side of 95th, it's pretty steep, so.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Anyway, that's the only way they can get those fields pretty well, unless you go down to 115th.
Okay. Reminder, next Tuesday, 1 o'clock, work session for our paved roads, so just wanna make sure everyone's aware of that. Are you...
Next Tuesday, the 8th?
Tuesday.
Okay.
No, it's the 15th, isn't it? Or today, the 1st, so it's the 15th. I'm two weeks ahead.
I had you down to 15, but I'll move it.
Yeah, 15. Nope, 15.
Okay.
I'm two weeks ahead, so we're good there.
Okay.
Got ahead of myself.
Did you get a total figure on the miles we got paved last year?
Last year, we done right at 14 miles or 28 lane miles, and I'll have all that.
Have you replaced... You replaced quite a few tubes?
Over... I wanna say our numbers, and I don't have it in front of me, but it was like 75 to 100 tubes.
I mean, when you're playing that asphalt, you're replacing tubes, didn't you?
We had to go in and replace... Three for sure that I can think of off the top of my head, large tubes, like 30-inch tubes. But that's one thing, we definitely, when we get this process gone through, wanna get out and get ahead of the game and...
Yeah, I know one fell in.
Yeah.
When you was getting ready to work.
Right before we got ready to work on it, so, but...
Well, 125, I see.
Good, thank you. I'll tell the guys, and... They done a good job, they really did, so.
Yeah.
We did have little technical difficulties over the weekend. We had a truck catch fire Sunday morning, started about 6 o'clock, and it was not found until... Fire Department didn't arrive a little after 7:00. That gives you an idea of...
Oh, my God!
I'm not sure if I've ever heard a call of technical difficulties before.
Yeah, a little bit of technical difficulties.
That's pretty fancy, so.
Yeah, so.
Well, I did a good job of burning it out.
Anyhow, we're, uh... That was one of our Freight Liners, 06 model, so we're waiting to hear back from the insurance. They've been contacted. They were in touch with us yesterday.
Starting to camp.
It started right underneath, right inside the driver's tire, so...
Warped the bed, probably.
It got... Flames were coming up out of the bed. We had it where the camera was on it.
Got hot, didn't it?
And you can go back and watch the whole thing. Yeah, it got real hot. I know you could see it from the hospital hill clear out to the shop, so it got super hot. So I wanna thank all the rural firemen and Sheriff's Department and everyone for helping out. I know somebody, I think it was the Sheriff's Department, moved a couple vehicles for us and got them away from it, so.
So that's two you're kinda gonna be looking for, maybe?
Yeah, 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 and we got one 146 back that had the motor issue, and it's not running right, so it's going back, back to them, figure out...
At Henley?
Yeah, figure out what's the deal, so. Just kinda let you know on that, where we're at. When we hear something back from the insurance, then I'll be back in contact with you, and that way, we kinda know what we have to work with and what have you. And we did have a salt, our spreader in the back of the truck, too, and it got pretty warm around the front of it as well, so. Looks like it did, but I... We haven't moved anything. I would...
I bet that much heat damaged it.
Yeah, so. But again, we didn't wanna touch anything till they got here and looked at everything, so. And then windmills, working on a final punch list for them, so we can get that finalized per the road use agreement and move forward. So, anything for me?
No, only thing I have, we already talked about, so I appreciate it.
Okay, yep. And the deal that you sent me the text on, on... Down south, there's nobody down there anywhere today, so we'll keep an eye on things and see what we...
I don't know what time they start. Now, they went by my house quitting last night about 5:00 o'clock.
About 5:00 o'clock, okay.
So maybe, I don't know. I don't know where they're coming from, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet. Lynn, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I appreciate you working on the roads.
Yep, and we are hauling gravel, and the belly dump is going, so just let you know.
Thank you, thank you. I don't think you have any problem finding a place that needs to look gravel.
No, we don't have any trouble there, so.
Yeah, I got a problem.
Okay, thank you, Eric. County Councilor comment. Justin? You're up, sir. Morning.
Morning, how are you, Commissioners?
Good, good.
We're ready to mail out the summonses on the next round of tax sales. Just kinda... We're finally done with the first sale, so there was a little hiccup. I take responsibility for it, and I appreciate Laura Holdridge's office for the deeds. We had about a two-week longer than I expected, but I did have a sick little man. He was out for four days, so I had some personal issues that kinda slowed it down a little bit, and then we kinda had some things we needed to take care of with the title company, too. So, the title company worked with Miss Holdridge's office, and that worked out well. So, it was delayed a little bit longer than we expected, but that was really the only, for me, the only real hiccup that we had. Everything else went pretty smoothly. As you know, the tax sale went really well. There's not as exciting a parcels this time around, but there's still quite a few. There's 107. We're hoping that we get some paid off and things of that nature, so. We're on track to have it in, still in May. We still... I know that the abstract company is extremely busy. We're gonna try to start sending out the demand letters for the 17s hopefully here in the next week or two, and then get those abstracts to the title company. And obviously, we like, you know, if that's the reason for our delay is getting the abstracts done, so be it, because that means there's a lot of things happening in our community with parcels being sold. So, we want that more than we want the tax sale, so, yeah. So with that, I'll get these mailed out this morning, and we'll start working on the second one, so.
It's great to get those back on the road.
Yeah, we're... Hopefully, we're getting back. Someone will hopefully buy them.
Somebody will.
Somebody will. Yeah, and I was surprised with some of the parcels that sold in Henley Valley, too. I mean, they... We only had a couple that went under, you know, under 50 bucks, so.
Really?
Hopefully, we'll keep that trend going.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yep. So we'll see, and we're gonna try to have... That third sale's gonna be Henley Valley, if we can get to it. That was our goal. We just kinda wanna wipe, get rid of the three years' worth, so. And then on Thursday, Chairman Harris and I are gonna meet in my office at 4:00 to finalize things with the hospital, so we'll hopefully get all that inked up and ready to go and finalize here before the end of March.
Thank you.
So.
That's great.
Progression on that, yeah. We'll have that done on our end, and we should have it done on their end, too. Should happen pretty quickly. We might even get it done this week, so.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Susan Bancroft, Finance Director.
The first topic I wanna talk about is grants. As Rob and I were filling out some grant applications this week, some things that kind of alarmed me a little bit was some of the questions they asked. And in particular is, do you have any audit violations? What kind of audit violations are they? And so, they are asking very specific questions on these federal grants with the ARPA funding, and so it may be that if there's an opportunity for something that could be a partnership with the city, that the city be the one that applies, or we have Bourbon County Ready be the person to apply, because it doesn't look good that we have a bad audit from last year. So, as we, as we work through some of these, I may be coming back and saying we may have the applicant be ready, Bourbon County ready, or maybe work with the City of Fort Scott, so.
I would prefer Bourbon County ready, if we have a choice, so.
Yeah, I agree. So I just wanted to kind of alert you on that.
Thank you.
Timeline of events. Before you, there's a sheet, and I went through till the end of the year and just kinda put together some particular calendar events. I had left off the 15th, the work session, so I'll get that added on there. But I worked with the City of Union Town, and their meeting, their regular meeting is on the 8th. So I asked if we could use Union Town City Hall on the 22nd at 6:00 PM instead, and they are okay with that, so we'll work towards that. And then I thought maybe on April 5th, we'd look at Mapleton. Is there any other location that you would like to look into as far as a, another meeting?
Bronson.
Bronson?
Bronson's one of our bigger towns.
Okay.
Of course, I said right against Allen County. They... We have a lot of contact with them, often on special road issues.
Okay.
And I would have one in Garland.
Garland, okay.
And I don't know if Hyattville would attend or not, but they had...
I don't have a center anymore.
Garland?
Garland's got a brand... Hyattville? Uh, last time I done there, we had a meeting at the fire station.
Fire station.
Yeah, so, let's look at both of them, just to reach out.
Okay, Garland and Hyattville, okay.
If they don't attend, we'll learn.
And I'll try and kinda like do every other week until we can get those scheduled out. We did talk about it on the radio today, that we wanted more involvement from Bourbon County, and so we'll continue to kinda send that message out. We are now also having department head meetings monthly, and so I put those on here, and when we, when we will start asking for budget documents from the department heads. And then I've already set up work sessions for budget preparation, so that they don't have to come to a commission meeting. We actually have a scheduled time, so I'm gonna hand this, the same schedule out to the department heads, as well as it also shows when we would have to have, if we exceed our revenue neutral rate, all the hearings. If we don't exceed it, when we have to have the budget in place, and so this is really just a guideline for us to know when we have to have specific publications done.
We don't wanna be crowded like when we're like...
Right, right. So, if you guys have anything that you want to add to this or additional work sessions, just let me know. Again, this is just kind of an attentive schedule for the rest of the year, and kinda keeps us on task.
Good long-term planning there.
Yeah, I did. I like to have things kinda... That's kinda how I work.
That's great, that's good.
The next thing I put at your table as well is, last year, we had some FEMA funding and some federal exchange dollars, and those were received into our special capital improvement fund. We can't legally do that. It has to go back into the fund that it's reimbursing, and so it either went into the Road and Bridge Fund or the Sales Tax Fund for Road and Bridge. And so, now that those funds are there, I'm asking that we transfer it into the specially... It's just a... It's just how we have to do it, but I'd like to transfer $376,000 from the Road and Bridge Fund over to that special capital improvement fund. That's the legal way to do it, as far as our financials. Yes.
Okay, and that's just Public Works?
Just Public Works.
Is that the same as the Special Machinery Fund we used to use?
No, so we have an equipment funding and a capital improvement fund, so we have two different ones.
But it's not for the general fund?
It's not for the general fund, no. So this goes specific...
It's only accounted for money for matching margins.
Yes, for bridges and things like that that need to be done. So I'll need a motion on that to be able to make that transfer, and then I also put the statute that governs that.
I move we allow Susan to move, what'd you say, 365?
376,000.
$376,000 to the Capital Improvement Fund, Funds in Public Works.
I second that. In discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll get that done. That'll be done in January's financials. And at the end of the year, I might just note, we may have to do a budget amendment to allow for that transfer, 'cause we didn't have that budgeted in there. Let's see, what's my next one? Hamlin Energy stopped by and visited with us. Currently, we have a contract with Pro Energy Solutions, does that sound right? Okay. And I'm not real sure if they are a consultant, or if they are actually the one that is billing us for our... They are the ones billing us for our energy consumption on gas. They are no longer going to be servicing our area, and so our contract is up in May, but Hamlin Energy would like to come in and be an advocate, a consultant on this, to find us a new source of energy group rather than Kansas Gas, and lock in our rates for us. Now, I'll preface this with, they're a consultant, they're not the actual group, so there would be a cost on, in addition to what we would be paying for. So I don't know if this is the route we wanna go, but I thought I'd get it in front of you for now. You can read through their material, and then we can revisit it next meeting.
Well, just a kinda side comment on that. Last year, where we had that very, very huge cold snap, we exceeded our...
And that's, that's what I was trying to get from Ashley. It's how your contracts are written, and we ran into the same thing over at the city. There's a certain amount of risk that you take on as a county, and I don't know how our contract reads, because we can't locate the contracts. So this is an opportunity for us to start over, and I think we need to do our homework and really work through this.
Do we know the savings we would have over just going with Kansas Gas, or is there a lot of savings, or?
You can do significant savings if you lock in the rate, but again, it depends on that risk. There's a, there's a factor that they put in there of how much risk. If you wanna have 100% of the risk, or if you just wanna have 50 to 90%, that determines your rate, and so I think it's something we need to really kinda study and determine what we wanna do, what's the best solution.
I think we need to be careful, too, because the rates are going up pretty dramatically, and then if they go back down, we're already locked in, we're gonna be paying a higher rate, so.
Right.
You know, and I'd recommend maybe our planners, Susan, visit with Kansas Gas, maybe they'll lock in a good deal for the municipality. I don't know that, so.
Yeah, yeah, I can. I'll get with them and try and set up a meeting. Okay, so I just wanted to present that to you. They are asking for you to consider that. Financials, do not have them for you today. Last night, yeah, actually yesterday, Patty and Rhonda and I, we were final... We were going through numbers, and we got to a point that we all agreed yesterday, and then I went through and did some more looking. There's a couple of journal entries that I need to make, where some money was in the wrong area, so I'll get those completed today, and then hopefully next week, we'll... I'll have something for you. Terry's not able to audit us until after April, anyway, so we're in good shape, but I'd like to get financials out to the department heads. That is something that I think we need to get done. Patty's still working on January, but she's hopeful that she'll have that done as well. We were hung up on one day for several weeks, so we're hoping to get there. Tomorrow, we have another department head meeting. I will send out the agenda, so you guys have an idea of what's on that. And then, we also yesterday met as a group, the Clerk's Department, with our website person, and Ashley's planning on doing a lot of new updates to the website, so that's kind of exciting, putting more information, more up-to-date information, staying current, and so that's kind of, I think, her agenda for this year, so excited about that. And then Thursday, we have a meeting with Universal to discuss the public safety building. We'd already, we've already met with our engineer, architect, and so our next step is to meet with Universal, so we'll work through some punch list items. And then I have two executive sessions that I need to call for.
So, just real quick, on a side note, John, talking about some more financials, last week, we asked Justin to look in to the private public partnership possibly for Elm Creek Lake. I've asked Susan to possibly look into what kind of money that we could have to start looking at, at what we can do to start restoring that facility. You know, we're sitting here with a, with a fairly nice fishing lake, hunting lake, and we're sitting right next to Hollister with 1,000 acres of walk-in. We need to capitalize on that.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I just kinda asked her to look at the financials on that, see if there may be some extra money.
And I'll put that in.
Grants or whatever.
I hope that we can do a five-to-10-year capital plan, also as we're doing our budget this year, and so that will... I'll put that in with notes to make that part of that planning.
Yeah, and on the radio this morning, I made note that that, that lake was built in 1935. It was a WPA project. Wonderful, the rock work out there. And that old dam is a laid-up dam, so you know, we need to really work to bring it back, 'cause to me, it's a gold mine, sooner or later. I think our biggest problem is getting water to the east side.
There's not any rock up there, is there?
Lot of rock, lots of rock.
Years ago, to discuss you, there's rock work.
Yeah.
Make a big boom out there.
Hey, we had rock work for a few years, and then got that lake a little deeper.
Yeah. And I think it's a great idea to look at developing it. I don't know if a development like that will ever be financially any more than a ball diamond or a swimming pool, but it's still a great thing to do for the public.
Yeah.
Well, as much hunting and fishing and sorts we have around here, you know, we can promote it. If we can have people renting out those cabins.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, do you wanna talk about the executive session? Do you have to?
Let's do the acquisition of real property first.
Okay.
And we wanna include Rob Harrington via cell phone, wrong speakerphone.
Okay.
Morning, Rhonda. Motion to go into executive session, KSA 75-4319, B6, for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property. The three commissioners, County Councilor Meeks, Susan Bancroft, and Rob Harrington by cell phone.
Second.
Be for how long?
Oh, I'd say 13 minutes.
Be for 15 minutes, so we would return here in, what would that be, 9:42?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. You got it, Ashley?
I got it.
All right.
Make a motion to resume normal session and no action.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
With that it Susan, must be she's not coming back.
She's coming back.
Coming back? Have nothing else? Okay. Public comment please. Nick, Lynn.
Thanks sir.
The first one's on a humorous name. Some people will take and do anything to get elected, but I have not changed my name to Clinton O'Hara. And the second one...
You haven't changed my name to Clinton.
I didn't know that my... I had been adopted or out or anything. Okay. So we're past that.
They're bills your votes?
Well, I know.
You are part of the O'Hara family.
Well, I know, but I haven't, you know, changed my name. When I read that, I had to die laughing. I thought it was kind of funny. The second thing, when I did go to that public forum, is I did want to inform people that they made a comment about taking the food sales tax off. And now, now I'm not talking about the county taking theirs off or anything like that. What I am going to say about the food sales tax, they made a snide remark about that and said, "Be careful what you wish for on that sales tax." Now, me and you would think that just the sales tax off the grocery stores, but they're talking about sales tax off your restaurants and... Be careful what you wish for. Eat your food at convenience stores and stuff. Be careful what you wish for because it could hurt the county in the long run not to collect that taxes. I mean, if you can afford to go to the restaurant, you can afford to pay the taxes. And I'm for taking it off at the grocery store, you know. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks Clinton.
Anything else public? Matt? Don? Kind of that back then. Lynn, can I get that?
You want that?
I just wanted to read it one more time.
One more time? Get a little bit.
Okay, so property evaluations go out today. They'll be mailed out today. Just want to kind of give you a heads up on what we're looking at as far as valuation and assessment. They have gone up. I mean, we expected that was going to happen with the real estate market the way it is and everything. We expected residential to go up. In total, appraised value, we're looking at about a 5% increase over last year. 6% of the increase, if we break it down that way, is in the... Or there's about 6% increase in residential. And then 6% in farm home sites, which would be your houses sitting on farms. That's where the big part of it is, is where their increase is coming from. But that's all market driven. You know, state statute says we got to be within 10% of market value on these properties. And the way the real estate market is right now, that's exactly what we got. So things are selling extremely high, way more than we have them valued at in most cases. And that's frowned upon by the state with us. If the sales come back and we're way off, they want to know why.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is a regulation by the state.
Yep. Yeah, it's all state.
That you're within a certain percentage of the appraised values on your assessed valuation.
Yep. And we have to send all sales into the state and they regulate that and make sure that we're doing, we're doing what we're supposed to do.
And they're not afraid to send you a letter.
Yeah. And they will, yeah, they'll talk nasty to you if you're not doing what you're supposed to do. So now that's just the value. I mean, that doesn't, you know, that's not the taxing. You want to make sure people understand that just because there's increase in the value doesn't mean necessarily their taxes are going to go up. That's all driven by, you know, other factors outside of our office. But just kind of wanted to get ahead of it because, you know, when these valuations hit, we're going to get a lot of phone calls in the office with people. And at that point, we just have to educate and tell them why we have to do what we have to do and go from there. So there is, once their valuations hit, they have 30 days to do what we call an informal protest where they can say, you know, this is too high and we'll sit down with them and go over. And if there's factors stating, you know, that we are too high or we have something valued wrong, then, you know, we'll make adjustments from there for sure. So there is, you know, they do have the opportunity to come in and sit down and go over why we have it valued the way we do. And we'll be happy to do that. You know, we're not perfect. There's things that get changed that we don't know about, you know, because we only visit each property once every six years. So, you know, there's a lot of information that we don't get regularly. So we're happy to sit down with everybody and go over stuff and explain to them why their property is valued the way it is. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up and let you know, you know, what's coming on that part of it. That's all I got.
Might be called a storm.
It could be. Yeah. 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 Yeah, you have to have thick skin to do this job. So, you know, and I understand totally, you know, it's one of those deals where unfortunately, it's kind of out of our hands on that, you know, with the real estate market being the way it is. And it's not just here. I mean, it is all over the state of Kansas and actually all over the United States. You know, property values have just skyrocketed.
Unbelievable.
A lot of the people that I'd heard in a call the other day said that they were anywhere from 10% to 15% or more in residential going up. So, you know, us being where we're at, we're better than that. So...
And to understand that assessed valuation, you're not setting the tax rate?
No. No.
Where you're doing is valuation of a property.
All we handle in our office is evaluation of what it's worth. We don't handle the tax side of it. So... That's all I got. You have any questions or anything?
No. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks Matt.
Any other public comments?
Where is elected official?
There's an elected official.
I'm sorry?
He skipped you.
Okay.
No, he's not elected.
He's not elected though.
Oh, he's not elected. Sorry.
He's a department head.
Sorry, department head.
He was, he'd be Tom Feller.
Okay, elected official comments. Laura?
Hi.
Hey Laura.
Morning.
I am requesting, this is something that just came up, so I didn't get it on the agenda, a executive session to protect identifiable non-elected personnel to protect their...
Privacy.
Privacy with you three commissioners and Susan.
Is it for job performance, job function?
Something that could possibly affect my office in the near future.
Okay.
How many minutes you want?
10.
Make a motion to go into executive session, case lay 75-4319B1 to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Three commissioners, Susan Bancroft and Register of Deeds, Laura Holdridge. 10 minutes. Return here at 10:16.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.